All right, I'd like to go ahead and call the July 7th, 2015 Board of Alderman Meeting to open session. First item on the agenda would be Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda would be the approval of minutes for the regular board meeting minutes on June 16th, 2015. I want to entertain a motion for that.
I think a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from June 16th, 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Delloye. Can I roll call vote, please?
Alderman Dreyer?
I abstain, I wasn't here.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloye?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with one abst- abstent. Never can say that word right. One abstaining. Next item on the agenda would be the approval of the executive session minutes from June 16th, 2015. I want to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the executive session minutes from June 16th, 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderperson. Holly, sorry. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloye?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Motion carries five to zero with one abstaining. Next item on the agenda would be hearing from the public. We ask that you keep it down to, or keep it to a minimum of five minutes. If there's anybody in the public that would like to say anything, please come up to the podium and state your name and...
My name's Paul Homble, I'm with the Warren County Fair Board, and I just wanted to thank the city for their involvement for our fair last week. And a special thanks to the mayor and the chief of police for participating in our first annual Celebrity Grease Pig Scramble. I think a lot of people got a kick out of that. I've heard enough of good things with fireworks. Thank you on behalf of the Fair Board for your involvement. So, and if there is any questions or hear anything in the future we need to work on, you know, feel free to get hold of us. So, that's all I had, just want to say thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it very much, Paul.
Enjoy watching the game this weekend.
What's that?
Just relax and enjoy watching the game or something.
Oh, yeah, I'm good now.
Did you guys catch the pig?
Did we catch both pigs? Yes.
No, the two of you?
They threw little cogs in on us that were very humorous.
Sorry, we missed it.
One being that, uh... It was a group effort. There were four of us, and we went against the opposing and mirrored Wright City team. So, it was Warrenton versus Wright City. And instead of catching one pig that was, should have been smaller, Paul...
Hey, that's Bob Kelso did it.
We ended up, uh, three pigs were released, we had to catch two and put them in the trough, and they were not small. But they weren't as large as the initial ones.
Yeah, I said they better smaller than the first two, didn't they?
They first let loose about two 600-pound pigs.
Yeah, I was, I was ready to go.
And the, the good thing was, we were saved, a team member knew what was going on, so we were standing outside watching Wright City flee for their lives with big saucer plate eyes. But no, it was, it was, it was a good time, it was fun, it was, it was, the money was given to a very good charitable cause, in my opinion.
They, they ended up giving money to both teams for their charity's choice, wasn't it?
Yeah, they, uh, Wright City decided the same way.
Yes.
So, it was, it was good. I'm looking forward to see if we do it next year, I'd love to see us even have a bigger selection of teams next year, that was fun.
Oh, I do too.
That was a lot of fun.
So, the charity wasn't like the hog association.
I wasn't up, I didn't get to see what they picked for charities.
Can I, can I go ahead and say that? Uh, we, we donated money to Jordan's Place.
Oh, great.
Great.
So, the whole, the whole, uh, it was $500 that was put in the pot, and the whole $500 was given to Jordan's Place, which...
That's awesome.
Ms. Kelly was very gracious and cheerfully accepting of it.
Mayor, couldn't you provide a picture that we could broadcast next meeting of the participants in that event?
I believe it could, I think every picture I found had me cut out of it, but I do have some of the Chief Hotty Show, so...
I think Fred has one.
We do, we just happen to have one.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sure we could even provide a video movie. So... Next on the agenda would be Board of Alderman comments. Anyone?
I was actually going to comment about the amount of feedback I got about the fireworks this year, so I have to admit, I'm usually on vacation the 4th of July weekend, and this was the first time I saw them too, so I thought they did a really good job.
I thought outstanding.
I loved the fact they moved them where they shot, because I could step out of my house, like Don Stein, and they're right there, I didn't have to go anywhere. It was great. Let's hope they're at the back, same spot next year.
Yeah, that was good. I don't want to hear that.
I'll piggyback off that and just say that, uh, it was really smooth this year. And I did, that was kind of what I was saving it for, was the comment, uh, Paul, that what you put forth and just helping us get along, and I say us, I was instrumental, helpful with when the parade was happening. I, I've never been approached so much as being, so many people being thankful that it's back on Main Street.
Well, and that's all on you all, I mean, that was, we was willing to do it, soon to come to us, and I didn't see a problem with it.
But it was your coordination that really helped out and let it run smooth, and I appreciate that. Um, the other part is, uh, work, being out there almost every day and working part of it. I won't say that it, I will say, never seen it run smoother. It was, it was really nice. It was, it was a pleasure to be out there working this, this year.
I just hope everybody enjoyed it.
And I hope they did, I've got nothing but positive feedback on it, so congratulations to you as well.
All right, thank you.
Can I, can I make a comment? Is there a place that we could discuss the fireworks policy as it relates to shooting off fireworks in the city? I'm, you know, our neighborhood is like a war zone for a while. I mean, it was really wild, and I know there was officers out trying to chase it down, and I just wondered if that's not the best use of time and effort, and I don't know if we should have at some point in time put it on the agenda and have a discussion as to, you know, Wentzville made a little change in their policy, should we think about making a change? Because, you know, when you're selling fireworks in Truesdale, a block from the city line, and you know, and then you have officers out giving warnings and tickets, I just don't, I think we should have that discussion at some point in time, if we could put it on the agenda. And I don't know where the chief is at on it.
No, I'm absolutely good with that. You know, the commentary I heard actually from Wentzville is, you know, there was a clear delineation, you know, here in town, it was constant, but there was a clear delineation in Wentzville, you know, when, when the window opened, the town blew up, and when the window closed, it was quiet. So, you know, because they did legalize it in, in that window, it actually was a better experience for, you know, everybody. I mean, everybody who doesn't like it knew that it was going to happen in that five-hour window, so they could prepare lessly, um, you know, so it really does kind of make sense to me.
Yeah, my daughter was doing a ride-along with one of the officers that night, and she said they just spent so much of their time just chasing down noise, you know, trying to give out warning tickets, or not, he didn't, he didn't write a lot of warning tickets, she said, but he did warn a lot of people, and I don't know how many tickets he ended up issuing, I know at least one, but, you know, so I just think we should have that discussion.
Absolutely.
Here's another angle to that, and correct me if I'm wrong, when you open up a window like that, not, we'll have that discussion, but it makes it a lot easier when you issue someone's afterwards saying you were allotted a window, and now you're outside of that window. Then a lot less argument in that level.
Well, the, the other thing I was wondering too, is if a person was going to ticket, can you ticket, and this may be a law, legal question, but can you ticket the property owner as opposed to try and catch the person who's doing it? Because sometimes you come up on property, it was quite evident that something was set off, but there may be 10 people staying around, so you have no idea who did it, but can you make the property owner responsible? So, that's something maybe we need to look at. It would probably make it easier to enforce.
We can't now, but that's something obviously to think about and look at with the ordinance.
Any further discussion? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda would be the appointment of board committees. I guess, for purposes, do I need to read this since it was posted, or need to read them? Okay. For the Ways and Means, Gary Ock, or Alderman Ock, Alderperson Holly, and Alderperson Castily, and then Alderman Dreyer were appointed for the Ways and Means. Uh, I guess main, the chairperson being Alderman Ock. On the policing personnel, Alderperson Holly was designated as the, uh, the chairperson for that group. Alderman Ock, Alderman Delloye, and Alderperson Castily. For infrastructure, Alderman Dreyer was appointed as chairperson for the committee, as well as Alderman Ock, Alderman Frederick, and Alderman Delloye. For recreation grounds and cemetery, Alderman Frederick was appointed as chairperson for that, Alderman Delloye, Alderperson Castily, and Alderperson Holly. For representative planning and zoning commission, Alderman Ock would be the representative to that, that commission, as well as for the representative of the park board would be Alderperson Holly. The reason why the representative to tourism was left open, I know this, this is probably one of the first times I can remember, I'm probably wrong in that, but that I can remember, we have a full working board that have full-time jobs, as well as myself. I've been able to make those meetings, so I just figured I could feed information to you and be a representative for take up that position. My schedule, obviously, I work right next door, but I can actually make that before I go to work, so I can actually take notes and be able to pass it along, so... I need to entertain a motion for the approval of the appointments on the board committees unless there's further discussion on it.
Make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments to the board committees.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Frederick, if you can have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloye?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of Justin Knoll, or introduction of Justin Knoll as a full-time grounds and maintenance worker at $12 an hour.
Board and mayor, I'd like to introduce Justin Knoll, in addition to my grounds and maintenance department.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Nice to meet you. Second, or next item on the agenda would be the introduction of Roberta Austin to the new Public Works Administration Assistant with a starting, start date of 7/1/2015 at $12 an hour.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Bobby Austin, the assistant public works.
I'm sorry, you go first, is it Bobby?
It's Bobby, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
So, they explained to you that part of your job is to make sure he's budget, he doesn't spend too much money? Guess they didn't explain that.
I'll correct that, I'll correct that, that's an impossible task.
That's why we didn't...
Yeah, I'm going to put that in the job description.
Next item on the agenda would be the review of the parking at city lot next to the post office. Anybody like to speak on that?
I will. Last meeting, you asked Guy to look at this lot, um, to determine if additional parking spaces, how many additional spaces would be lost by using the existing entrance, and to determine if there is a need to stripe the lot and what the improvement would be based on that. Guy did look at it, he determined that currently there are 19 parking spaces on the post offices lot. There are an additional 10 spaces currently on our city lot without changing the entrance, without moving the light pole, or without striping, that's just allowing the parking as they have been parking there. If the lot were striped, three additional spaces could be gained, possibly. We actually visited, uh, down there at the post office on different times throughout the day. 9:30 in the morning, around 10:30 in the morning, just before lunch, and then early afternoon. At all of those times, there were parking spaces available on the lot right beside the post office. There weren't always spaces available on our gravel lot, but there were always during all those times spaces, in fact, multiple spaces available on the lot beside the post office. So, it appears that there are plenty of spaces there, and the only time we did not visit was on Saturday, so maybe Saturday morning is a different situation, but different weekdays at different times, it appears there's ample parking up close to the building. The cost to stripe the lot, if that's what you all decide to do, is about $500 initially, and then thereafter would be about $100 per striping, would take a couple of hours of staff time. And since Guy's here, he certainly could address this, but he doesn't feel, um, that this is really going to prove to be a benefit, as I said, three spaces at the most would be all that would be gained. Some of the parking on that lot appears to be from the apartments that are close in proximity to that overnight, maybe one or two vehicles that seem to be spending there overnight, so we believe that's where those vehicles belong. But overall, it doesn't appear that there is a lack of parking issue there related to the post office.
Well, I mean, to me, it's, it makes sense to me, at this time, take no other action. I mean, I brought this up initially because I did receive some complaints about parking issues, but if, if it hasn't, isn't an ongoing problem, I'm not sure we should address it at this time, that's all I feel about it.
If the issue was that there's not parking on the city's lot, at the front of the city's lot, that is probably a true statement. But if the issue is that there's not parking closer in, which actually of the side of the building, we never saw that to be a problem in the times we visited there.
So, with that being said, we, if we're not taking any action, then it doesn't need to be a motion. All right. Is that agreeable among the board? All right. Next item on the agenda would be Attorney for Director Operations and Finance Officer, Terry Tolman.
My first item for you is a discussion related to the city logo. If you remember last meeting, we looked at the possible options that were presented to us, and you all had some suggestions. We took those back to the designers, and tonight you have the results of them going back and making the requested changes. You have A through F, A through D being really the same design with different changes, and then E and F being two of the other designs that you had requested additions or changes be made.
Well, before we go further, can I introduce one more concept for us to consider?
Please.
Absolutely.
When we did our comprehensive plan meeting, um, they had developed a logo to use for the comprehensive plan, and I thought this was kind of eye-catching, and asked some opinions at the public input meeting, and several other people agreed, so we would not necessarily have to keep the wording on the bottom. But I would at least like us to consider this as an option. In looking at this, where, what I would do with the words is keep our small-town living, and then the moving forward. So, I would like to at least propose an option. We have A, B, C, D, E, F, this would be option G.
I, I, after looking at the revisions, I learned quite quickly that people should not second-guess designers, because every change, they changed that we suggest they make was not progression, it was regression. And I did talk to Tony at, at the meeting, and I liked the W concept initially when that came out as part of the, the comprehensive plan, I thought that was the new level, I thought, wow, that's pretty cool, forward, you know, it looked nice. I think there needs to be lettering underneath it, I could live with just Warrenton, Missouri on it, or just Warrenton on it.
What do you think of the leaving the moving forward?
I could live with that. If that's, if it just said Warrenton moving forward, I think that's sufficient.
Okay. I did ask Lisa whether we had permission to use this, and she said yes. That because we had paid for it with our comprehensive plan, that it was ours.
It's a little creepy.
You guys don't have to agree, I'm just giving you another option.
No, ask Mrs. Thorne, and why I think it's very creepy.
Because she kind of suggested that earlier today.
Who did?
So, I'm like, who, who talked to her?
As I look at the different screens up here and here, the colors are all a little bit different, is it just the quality of the PC ones?
There you go sideways, use the one in front of you.
It's because of the projection.
No, yours is more pink than this one.
It's a different setting on your display.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I think, I mean, I would support Tony's idea 100%, I could live with moving forward, uh, with this Warrenton.
And my idea too with this is, you know, as, as we research logos on cities, what I did is I went Kansas, Oklahoma, Arkansas, and Iowa, this whole area, and I went through cities and I dug up all their logos, and tried to find somebody that was similar to us. So many of them would do just this, and then the website sells what we want to say. And that's where I think we have the ability to put, you know, small-town living, urban access, blah, 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 you know, all the things that we wanted people to think of, so, um, I, I like this. But that's kind of creepy.
I'm going to be the pessimist here. I, I've heard very, various people talk about the water bottles and ask, why do we have a rainbow scheme on our water bottle?
People didn't look at it that way.
Just telling you what was said.
I don't look at it as a rainbow, but...
Oh, my gosh.
That was said by more than one person. Regardless of what it, what is, it just, what does that say, no, it's what did they ask, what does it say about our community, I mean, why, why are they doing, why are they doing the colors that way, was the question. I'm not so much of where you just went.
But I, I mean, I don't think those, the screen is looking, I don't think those are rainbow colors, they're just bright vivid colors, they're not following, I don't think green's part of a rainbow, I don't think orange is part of a rainbow, although I'm, it's been a long time since I've been in first grade, but, you know. Go to that, I'm confused.
It probably isn't, but when you put multiple colors together, someone's going to say it's rainbow.
Well, they're going to say, I mean, we got criticized with, with all the other ones too, so, we're going to be criticized no matter what we do.
I think this is eye-catching, I think on our vehicles, this is eye-catching, um, you know, I, I think, I think it's nice.
I mean, if Alderman Holly would make a motion, I mean, with the W, with, with the words moving forward, Warrenton only, then I would support that motion.
I would make a motion that we approve our logo as option G with the slogan Warrenton Moving Forward.
I'd second that.
Okay. Motion is made to proceed with option G for the approval of design as the new city logo. Uh, motion has been made by Alderperson Holly and seconded by Alderman Ock, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloye?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
No.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one. Next item on the agenda.
The next item I have is a discussion of the exchange of property between the Market Street property and the Pinkney Street property, uh, between the funds of the city. Since the decision was made to utilize the Pinkney Street property as a new recreational site, um, and to utilize the Market Street property as an economic development opportunity for the future, um, it's necessary for us to look at transferring those property ownerships between funds. Originally, the Pinkney Street property was purchased by the Industrial Development Authority, but ended up being taken over by the city of Warrenton, who had to make the payments out of the general fund. The Market Street property was originally purchased with the intent to put a recreational site there, and was purchased through capital sales tax funds, which are to be utilized for recreation only. So, since we've decided to exchange those uses, if you will, it's necessary for us to exchange the funds that those properties belong to. I've talked with city attorney Graville, we believe that the cleanest way to accomplish this is to utilize their original values at the time those properties were purchased, uh, being well aware that the values now are certainly not what they were on either of the properties back then, uh, but leaves a clearly defined audit trail for how we arrived at the numbers we'd be using. It would result in the properties being exchanged with a payment from the general fund to the capital sales tax fund of $242,531, which is the difference in value between the properties, taking into consideration that the IDA property still has a loan balance. I don't think we can consider that loan balance as being a part of that, since it would still need to be paid by the fund that's accepting it. So, we would transfer those funds, um, and then make the decision from there whether we want to utilize those funds along with another roughly $100,000 out of the capital sales tax fund, and go ahead and pay off the Pinkney Street property so that there's no loan. With interest rates being as low, low as they currently are on anything that we have that's invested, there's really no benefit to keeping the cash in the bank, so to speak, because we're paying more in interest expense than we're gaining in interest income. So, my recommendation to you would be that we exchange the properties, we transfer the funds to take care of the difference in balance, and that we consider paying off the Pinkney Street property out of the capital sales tax fund.
I, I think it's a good approach, I think it's necessary, I think the reality is, the Pinkney Street property would never be an industrial development property, because you're not going to get something coming in, going to put anything next to where the school sits. I said to Terry before, when I was on the board, the concept of getting that was that if you buy that property originally for recreation, somehow it ended up being purchased by the IDA board, and I think we need to return it to the concept of the Pinkney Street being used for recreation development. And I also think it's a good idea that we would, uh, pay off the debt on the property, um, because it's a point well taken, the, the difference between the interest, um, expense on the loan, and what you can earn by keeping money in the bank is significant, and it doesn't create a cash flow situation, so I'd make a motion that we...
Just to make, for clarification, in the motion, do you need the amount included, and do you need that we are talking about paying that off within the capital funds?
I think that for purposes of this, the motion needs to be to exchange the fu, to exchange the properties and transfer the balance, doesn't have, necessarily have to be exact. And then I think what I need to do is bring to you at a future meeting the proposal to pay off, because I need to get an exact balance for a payoff. I can bring that to you next meeting, and we can approve paying off the property.
So, we'll keep the exact amount out until further time?
Yes.
And we'll just...
Because we're going to need to transfer paperwork and those things, which is going to have to come at a, at a, at a future meeting.
If, unless you want to, I'll go ahead and read back the motion and make sure we'll be... I'll entertain a motion for the exchange of the Market Street and Pinkney Street property between funds and transfer the balance between the two.
Good or not?
And I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Dreyer, if I can have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloye?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
My next item for you are the fuel bids. Annually, at this time, we bid out all of the fuel for the city, and typically, we will get at least a couple of bids back. We did not this year, uh, we received only one bid, although we sent it out to 10 vendors on our list, posted at all the typical places, we just simply didn't get anything back, uh, other than from Warrenton Oil, um, who are offering posted pump price for unleaded fuel, and 10 cents above OPIS for diesel fuel delivered to our location at the Public Works and Treatment Plant facilities. And it is the recommendation of Guy and myself that we accept a bid from Warrenton Oil.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve the fuel bid from Warrenton Oil for unleaded fuel for posted, uh, pump price, and diesel fuel delivered to location at 10 cents above OPIS price, uh, the only bid.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Frederick, seconded by Alderperson Holly, if I could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Delloye?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kessely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Can I ask a question about this?
Sure.
Typically, when the bids come in, do we always get posted pump prices?
We were getting with the previous bidder a few cents below, but it's never been a significant amount below.
Because I was saying, if we always get pump prices, then what's the point of bidding?
No, we have in the past-
Then we just got to do whatever's convenient and buy gas.
Sure.
But if, but if there's, is there always a difference on diesel?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's the reason for it. Okay.
Yes.
Good question. I mean, I would have, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because if there's no price difference, you're paying a pump. The officer down needs gas, and you have to be one part town, he just fills up where it's closest if the prices are all the same.
The key is the diesel, though, right?
Well, and we have an account set up with whoever we deal with, so that we can track the mileage in the vehicle, which vehicle is receiving the fuel, so we have the ability to account for what we're doing. So I would be very cautious of where you can go anywhere and buy it, because there's no way for us to have the ability to track that.
That's fair.
It provides accountability.
Yes. My next item for you is the auto repair and service bid. We did, this again is something we bid out annually. We did receive three bids from three local providers, have looked at this. Guy and Brad have looked at this closely, compared, and because of both the labor rates, oil change, filter and lube, which is a service that we probably use more than any more frequently, and the ability for Warrenton Tire and Muffler is the only provider who can provide us with towing service. The others don't have a tow truck, so have to pay, which means we have to pay. The recommendation is to accept the bid from Warrenton Tire and Muffler.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the auto repair and service bid from Warrenton Tire and Muffler being the little bid.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderson Holly, signed by Alderman Ock. If I could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kessely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Can I ask another question? Well, if Warrenton Tire and Muffler isn't charging us for towing vehicles, I'm assuming the person whose vehicle is towed is getting charged a fee for storage or the tow. Is that how that works, or we don't know?
Well, this is for towing of our city vehicles.
Oh, so, okay, so it's not if we were to have a citizen's vehicle towed for whatever reason, that'd be, that's under something else.
That's a completely different, this is like, every once in a while, we'll have a vehicle in the parking lot that won't start, or there's a problem, and they'll come and pick those up wherever they need to and tow them and get them running. So we don't have to pay a tow bill. The only other thing I have is just a reminder for all of you, your newsletter articles are due July 20th to Jessica. Need to be approximately 250 words, except, Mayor, you have about 350 to 400 for the front page piece. So please be thinking about your newsletter.
Say that date again for me. What'd you say? July what?
July 20th to Jessica. And she will do editing and make it all flowery and check all the spelling and punctuation and all of that stuff before she puts it in. So if you can just get her your draft, she'll help you with that part of it if need be.
So we can't like say, dear constituent, thank you, and she just fills in everything?
Well, no, I don't think she'll go that far. A few words in the middle would be really good.
How is it possible that that has snuck up so fast?
Yeah, it seemed like a long time away that she said that last time.
I know.
It was a month ago she told us.
It's coming very quickly now. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda would be hearing from economic development directors. Michelle Smith?
Good evening. I have for you tonight my economic development update.
I, I, I just have to say, when I read it, I thought, wow, there's a lot going on. So my compliments to the amount of work you've done since the last report, and, you know, nothing to announce, or nothing to be excited about, but lots of going on. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. The only other thing I have is, I've had sent an email to all of you in reference to the Warrenton Area Chamber of Converse. Meet your elected officials if you're available. I did let Jan know that it is a working board, so we may not be able to get anybody there, and she understands that. But it is Tuesday, September 8th, from 11:45 to 1:00 at Knights of Columbus.
Fred, would you like to represent us?
I'll be there.
You can go.
I'll be there.
I believe I'm going to be able to do it.
Awesome.
All right. Next on the agenda would be speaking from our, or hearing from our finance manager.
Good evening. The first item I have is the accounts payable for the month of June in the amount of $283,213.79.
Said it was 283,213.71, correct?
79.
79. Thank you.
Make a motion for the approval of the bills in the amount of $283,213.79.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Delloy to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $283,213, $283,213. Never mind, I'm messing that all up. $283,213.79.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kessely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
My next item is the financial report for the month of May.
Well, I was feeling really good about the sales tax until the main one came in. It was really a huge drop in the amount of sales tax. I'm still realizing we're at 7%. Here today, we're okay, but, you know, we were doing so good, that'll just go off the table. I assume that's all related to timing issues on the part of how the state issues the checks, as opposed to any event that would cause sales tax to go way down.
I don't think we're in events. We're going to, I'll give you the June information next month, but then we'll have approvals and things like that for July and August and all that, so I'm not sure exactly where that's going to fall.
It's going to rain for 30 days straight?
How many, how many charters were scheduled during that time?
We had five scheduled and actually held one.
There you go.
We have one upcoming, though. Do you think for us?
I don't have any else.
Go ahead. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda would be Resolution 310A. Do you need me to speak on that, Terry, or?
I certainly can.
If you'd like, I mean.
This is the interstate, the next piece of the interstate going west. I'm not sure it's the same 640 feet, because we're kind of at that point where it starts to spread out. So it's a calculation that had to be done by Lewis and Beatty to determine what the piece actually is, but that's what this represents, is the next section to go on the ballot for the next election, moving westward.
All right. I think we have to have a reading on this, is that correct?
Just one reading.
Just do a motion for the resolution?
No, we have to have a reading on the-
Well, motion for reading and passage, just one time.
So I'll entertain a motion for the reading and passage of Resolution Number 310.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock and signed by Alderman Dryer for the reading and passage of Resolution 310.
Resolution of the Warrenton Board of Aldermen, calling for a public hearing to annex unincorporated area into the city, to the city of Warrenton, Missouri at the western city limits.
And could I have a roll call vote on that, please?
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kessely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. And next item on the agenda will be bills and bills to ordinances.
Make a motion for the introduction, first reading of Bill Number 2615.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Frederick for the first reading of Bill Number 26-15.
In ordinance amending Section 700.120 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, establishing rates for sewer service within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton.
I entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 2615.
Call for a second reading, passage of Bill Number 26-15. Second.
Delloy, thank you. Motion made by Alderman Dryer, signed by Alderman Delloy for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 2615.
In ordinance amending Section 700.120, the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, establishing rates for sewer service within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton.
Can I roll call vote, please?
Alderson Kessely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion, or bill carries, motion to pass the bill carries six zero. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 2715.
Call for the first reading of Bill Number 27-15.
Second.
Motion made by Alderson Holly, signed by Alderman Ock for the first reading of Bill Number 2715.
In ordinance amending Section 705.210 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, establishing rates for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton.
Entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 2715.
Make a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 27-15.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Frederick, signed by Alderman Dryer for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 2715.
In ordinance amending Section 705.210 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, establishing rates for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton.
Can I roll call vote, please?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kessely?
Yes.
Passage of Bill Number 2715, passes six zero. Entertain the first reading of Bill Number, or entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 2815.
Call for the first reading of Bill Number 28-15.
Second.
Motion made by Alderson Holly, signed by Alderman Dryer for the first reading of Bill Number 28-15.
In ordinance amending Section 705.110 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, relating to water meters.
Entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 28-15.
I'll just, call for the second reading of Bill 2815, passage.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderson Holly for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 2815.
In ordinance amending Section 705.110 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, relating to water meters.
Can I roll call vote, please?
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kessely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Passage of Bill Number 2815, passes six zero. Entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 29-15.
Call for the first reading of Bill Number 2915. Second.
Motion made by Alderson, I'm sorry, Alderman Delloy, signed by Alderman Frederick for the first reading of Bill Number 29-15.
In ordinance approving the signing of a pipe license agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company for the installation of a wastewater pipeline on railway property.
Entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 29-15.
Call for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 29-15.
Second.
Motion made by Alderson Holly, signed by Alderman Dryer for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 29-15.
In ordinance approving the signing of a pipe license agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company for the installation of a wastewater pipeline on railway property.
Can I roll call vote, please?
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kessely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Passage of Bill Number 29-15, carries six zero. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Before we do that, just a reminder that we have Concert in the Park this week, this Thursday night at 7:00.
I believe it will be acoustic.
I don't remember. Yeah, I think it was. Now, how about a motion to go into executive session for purposes of security measures?
Second.
Motion made by Alderson Holly, signed by Alderman Dryer to close regular board meetings and go into executive session for security measures. Can I roll call vote?
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kessely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. We are adjourned.